I got my own, but I got some. You got this? Okay. So. I want to know about that. I want to know about this.
Good evening, everybody. This meeting is called the order. And we'll start with the roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Levy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Sonier.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sawyer.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. If you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everybody. We have a nice agenda this evening. We'll start with our ceremonies and presentations. And Suzanne Leclerc.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. Mayor Levy and council, tonight, as always in the beginning of the new year, we do the appointments for the boards and committees. And this evening, we have the appointments for the Historical Preservation Committee, the Community Investment Committee, the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Review. And we can handle them all together if it's your desire. And I'll just go through and you guys can tell me what you'd like to do, okay? The first one we have is Historical Preservation. And we have some incumbents applying for reappointment. And they are Lori Glock, David Langley, and Michelle Perkins. The term on this committee is a two-year term in length, and it will end on January 1st, 2020. We've advertised it according to council's policy on the website, Facebook, Channel 10. The committee held 11 meetings during 2017. Lori Glock attended 10 meetings. David Langley attended eight meetings. And Michelle Perkins attended seven meetings. Would you like me to continue with the next committee? Or do you want to address that one?
Counsel, what are your thoughts? They're all incumbents. You want to continue and then we'll talk afterwards.
And some of these individuals are in the audience this evening.
Terrific.
Okay. Then we're on to Board of Adjustment. And the members applying for reappointment are John Hanlon and Randy Carlson as regular members, and Kevin Sterling as an alternate member. Terms on this board are three years in length, and they will expire January 1st, 2021. The board held two meetings in 2017. John Hanlon attended one meeting. Randy Carlson attended two meetings. And Kevin Sterling attended zero meetings. Next, we have the Community Investment Fund Committee. And the members applying for reappointment are Darwin Nakarado, Sue Griswold, Bruce Caldwell, and Marty McKenna. Terms on this committee are staggered based on length of service, and they will be for one, two, and three years. The terms of office for these positions would expire. Marty McKenna would expire January 2019. Bruce Caldwell would expire January 2020. Darwin Nakarado and Sue Griswold would expire January 2021. Then we have the Board of Review. And we have alternate member Jeff Cahill. And he's applying for appointment as a regular member. And terms on this committee are three years in length. And they will end on January 1st, 2021. The board held four meetings in 2017. And Jeff Cahill attended all four meetings.
Great. Thank you very much. Correct me if I'm wrong. Other than Jeff, everyone is sitting right now on their board?
Correct. And Jeff was, he's...
He's an alternate?
Correct.
Okay. Well, first, I'm just going to say, because I see a lot of you here, the obvious. We can't thank you enough for your contribution to our community and your hard work and your willingness to continue and move forward. So I'll thank everybody in that regard. You're all incumbents. I don't do this often, but I'm going to make a motion to approve all of you, as read by, and we could have discussion about, by Suzanne Leclerc. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Right, Val?
I just wanted to ask a clarification question on the CIF. How were the terms chosen?
The terms were originally in the bylaws or the original intent of CIF. And past years, we haven't been doing the staggered terms. And as the CIF committee discussed, we'd get back on track doing the staggered terms. And we did it by longevity. We gave Darwin and Sue Griswold, who have been on the committee the longest, we gave them the longest term.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Anyone else, counsel? Suzanne?
Thank you.
Excuse me. Are you going to take them individually now?
I can do them all at once.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Levy?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Sonier?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sawyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. And may I ask the mayor to join me up at the podium and swear them all in?
I would love to. Thank you.
So if any of the volunteers for any of these committees can join us up at the podium, that would be great. Anyone else? We're just going to do a generic swearing. If you just, I, if you state your name, so I?
I.
Thank you. To solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Colorado, the Charter and the Originuses of the City of Woodland Park, and the fifty-fourth of the G's of the board of committee of Congress and the House. Thank you. And I can give you your oath and we can use this sign up. Thank you.
First, why don't you go first, Michelle, since she's very struggling on the program? Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you. Thanks, Su. Thank you. Thanks, Michelle. You bet. Thank you. Suzanne, thank you. And once again, everybody, even those certainly that aren't here today, this is what our community is all about. And we all know things aren't necessarily easy all the way. But we really appreciate your support and your willingness. And so good luck in the coming year. And you know that council will always be here to support you, as will the citizens of our community. So thanks very much. Okay. We'll move on. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections tonight?
Mayor Levy, I do have two corrections to the agenda. The first being, the ordinance on initial posting should be, instead of consider ordinance number 1315, it should read 1316. That's correction. It's only initial posting, so we're good. The next one is under the presentation of the Community Investment Review. Darwin Nakarado is not with us this evening. That'll be Councilmember Carr presenting.
Great. Anything else?
Can I make something?
Please.
Is it appropriate to ask at this time about an understanding or an update on the subcontractors at Memorial Park with its status?
I'm happy to do that now, or I can do it during manager's report.
Why don't we go ahead and do it now?
Be happy to. I just provided to our counsel this evening, our attorney this evening, some documentation that will hopefully allow us to move forward. It's the bond information from the general contractor. So she's going to be able to take a look at that. Again, should we follow the process that was put in place two months ago? The thing would end on February 15. If there were no legal actions taken by the subcontractors to the general, then we would be obligated to pay the general contractor. But the subs still have 30 days to finish that by statute. But with this opportunity that was presented to us earlier this week, and with her review of that, we may be able to close that a bit earlier. But we're just going to have to review that. We're not sitting idly by. We're following the process as described by law to take care of the subcontractors as well as the contractor.
So there was a performance bond on the job material and payment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's always required.
I understand. Is it not required under the Miller Act, too? You don't have to answer that. That's just...
It's a state statutory issue. And that's what requires it.
All right, thank you.
And the city obtains those as they always do under state statute.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent calendar. And Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, we have the approval of the minutes from the December 18th, 2017 City Council Regular Meeting. We also have the approval of the December 2017 Statement of Expenditures. I do have one item I need to add to the minutes that was brought to my attention. I need to add, on page five, where City Manager Butterey read his letter into the record of his retirement, he had stopped at a point in his letter and made a statement. And I had just put the letter in there verbatim. So I have to add in there, "Tonight, as required by my contract, I am giving my 120-day notice to the City Council of my intent to retire on April 20th, 2018." So that statement's added into the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel? Questions? If not, call for motion to approve consent calendar. Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. Thank you. Levy?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sonier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six. In front of you, on discussion of the hiring of the new city manager. I'll preface by saying this. I hope everybody will hear me loud and clear. There's been a lot of conjecture, a lot of conversation about this council and how they do business, one way or the other. Let me assure you of this. And I'm so proud to say this today. Because the last eight days, I think we're coming up with a document or two that will help us in moving forward. And everybody at this podium has been a part of that process, a positive part of that process. And so I'll thank council for that to start with. And I just know that we all in this room feel like one of the most important things we're going to do moving forward is trying to hire a great city manager. And so that said, we're all on the same page. And we will start the discussion. We asked Val Carr. And he agreed that he was going to help us relative to the post on the website or wherever we decide to post this job. So I'm going to start with Val and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I came up with a small job ad. It doesn't look small when I look at it here. But that was concise enough to fit on a website. And it has various characteristics. I made it a generic administrator-manager. It was pointed out to me, the charter says city manager. So that's obviously what we're sticking with because we're not about to change the charter.
Let's just go back for a second. We're not going to change the charter. But everything in the job posting, just so everybody understands, has got to be reflected, right, in the job description. So if the job description says one thing, the posting can't say another. So we can change the job description to match what we put in, just so everybody understands that. We can change that anytime. It's not like changing the charter.
Correct. And so I threw something out there. It was last weekend. So unfortunately, it was a long weekend. We didn't really get it distributed soon. But I had also some changes to the job description, which I'll actually pass out to council right now. And these are proposed.
Cut it up that way, too.
I think these are just things. This is an iterative process.
Give us one back.
Thank you. We need it. John.
Anyway, this... The intention was to have an iterative process where we did without an open meeting requirement. So we spun things through the city clerk. She'd collate them and we'd come back. Because of holidays and things, we've been a little slow on doing that. But we're hopeful we can do a better job in the future. Carol Harvey's got a presentation. She's got a nice presentation to put on PowerPoint. She came up with that late this afternoon. We were distributed to us late this afternoon. I wanted to say that mine was based on some changes to the job description, which I hadn't put out yet. But that's what we're looking at here. And further than that, I don't think you want me to read that job ad text, do you?
Yeah, let's start with Carol and go from there. Do you think that makes sense?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, at our special meeting last week, we had input from the public. And I hope we do again tonight. But an individual who made a comment last week challenged the council and had assumed that none of us have had the experience of hiring an individual with this breadth of responsibility or supervisory roles or program management roles. And that's not true. I have. Unfortunately, I hire and fire people on an annual basis. As a federal employee, I'm required, as a supervisor, I'm required to take training on how to write job descriptions and how to write job announcements once a year. And I just finished that instruction. So I wanted to share some of the pitfalls of a job description and a job announcement, so we can avoid those. And there are three major components. This is going to be the first phase of our search process. We're going to have to make sure we've got the job description right. And just with a quick glance at Val's recommendations for our current job description, I think these are great. And I think that we should move to adopt these tonight. And then the job announcement. Job titles derive from an authority. In my case, the Office of Personnel Management and the Department of Labor dictate what my job titles must be. I can't get creative. I have in the past, and I got in a lot of trouble with that, in that there was confusion about the job that I had advertised. These are all the jobs for general service employees for the federal government are advertised on USA Jobs. There's a screening process that those job descriptions and job announcements go through. And it got kicked back to me because I got a little bit too creative with the job title. And that put us behind a month and a half hiring a new individual. So job title is important. Val has acknowledged that in his draft, he may have used the word city administrator. It certainly describes what our city manager does. But our city charter says we have a city manager, not a city administrator. I think we've already established that. Now, job descriptions. We have two documents that we derive our job description for the city manager from. The first one, of course, is the city charter. And I've basically cut and paste the most relevant parts of that job description for you. If you'd like to look at them here on the screen, you can. There are some copies, colored copies of this slide presentation in the back if you want to pick one up. Or you can simply go to the city charter. But whatever happens, the job announcement must derive directly from an authoritative document. In this case, city charter and the job description that I think the last time was updated for the city was 2015. I honestly don't recall when that happened. But we have a job description that's dated 2015. And I think we'll have a discussion here where that job description probably does need to be tweaked. Continuing on with that job description from the charter. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of areas that... I think it's on this page. There is a requirement... Let's go to the next one. For our city manager to have engineering, architectural, maintenance, construction, and other technical expertise in order to provide that service to the city. And I think we really do need to add that to our job description as well. In the draft job announcement that I've prepared for us to review, I do pull that particular job requirement or job description out. And I think it is a very important one for us to consider. Now, here's excerpt from the job description that I mentioned from 2015. I don't think you're going to find that any of these contradict the charter. They simply add to the charter or explain in fuller detail what those minimum requirements that are identified in the charter actually mean. I'll let you look at those for a second. Then, in that job description from 2015, there's a very generic boilerplate requirement for education and experience. I know Val had questioned why political science. My undergraduate degrees in political science, I don't know that that would make me a very good city manager. And if we need to take that one out, that's fine with me, too. But there are other areas that I think would be very important in terms of formal education from an accredited university or college or a certification program like professional program manager might be more appropriate to insert there. And then there are a list of necessary knowledge of skills and abilities that are in our job description as well. Now, a job... I'll go back to that. I want you guys to look at that one. Bizarre minimum qualifications. These screens are much better than the screen we had before. But I know that text is pretty small. And again, there are copies of this in the back. And you can see, there's a great emphasis in that job description on communication skills. Again, another skill that is absolutely important for a city manager. Now, the job announcement. My training tells me I have to derive the job announcement directly from those authoritative documents. In our case, the charter and an agreed-upon job description. So CML, the Colorado Municipal League, recommends that these are the basic elements of a job announcement. Title, we've already determined that's the city manager. Some enticement to want to come to Woodland Park. It can be one or two words. It can be a couple of photographs. This is something that will not only be posted on our website, but will also go to whatever search engines that we determine will give us that nationwide search to really broaden our ability to bring in people from a number of parts of the country. What are the goals and objectives of the city? Those are on our website. The minimum requirements that we've already discussed. A salary range needs to be, it's not a statutory requirement, but we need to let potential candidates know what our salary range is. Or if it's not a range, what is the basic salary that we will offer this individual who wants to come to Woodland Park and take on the onerous job of being the city manager? We need to let them know if residency is required. And that is a charter requirement. We may want to put a parameter in there that says you don't have to be a resident when you apply, but you would have to be a resident within X number of days after being selected. What's the filing deadline? Our charter says that once the vacancy occurs with the city manager, we must fill the position within six months. That's the charter requirement. So do we want to put an advertisement out there for two weeks, two months? In my case, I normally advertise for 10 days, 10 duty days. And I normally get hundreds of applications. So 10 duty days really isn't that short of amount of time. But for this case, I would say 30 days, just in recommendation. And then finally, where are they going to send their application and their resume? And will we require a cover letter? Will we develop an application similar to the one that we used for our board members who applied tonight? Those are administrative requirements. But we need to be as clear as possible with potential candidates. We don't want to confuse them with the requirements. We don't want to confuse them with the salary. We don't want to confuse them on a requirement to live in Woodland Park. And we certainly want to give them the window which they can submit those resumes. And if possible, let them know how soon we will make a decision. Those are the basics of a job announcement, whether it's for this position or a position with the federal government. Now, Val did a really good draft. And I've only highlighted those things that probably needed correction. And Val's absolutely right. This is very brief. It certainly gets the point across. But it did lack some of those basic elements that the Colorado Municipal League has encouraged us to include in our job announcement. And certainly, the requirements that I'm required as a federal employee to put in my job announcement. Now, city administrator, we've already got over that hurdle. Val had suggested an experience level of seven years. I would like to have someone with seven years. But right now, the job description says five years. We can figure out what is the better range, maybe tonight, maybe later. But with seven years' experience, then you're going to have to increase that salary range. And then we talk about, and Val does address some educational requirements. And I know he's since corrected, a master's in administration. I wasn't really sure what that is. It could have been public administration. It could have been business administration. I think he's found a way to address that and make it more specific. And then I think, again, Val has correctly pointed out, we need someone who understands engineering project management. It doesn't mean that we'll ever get anyone who's got professional engineer certification, as David did. We may. That would be a great bonus. But at least someone who understands engineering project management. So don't want to throw the baby out with bathwater in this. But I took a different approach. I pulled from the website the wonderful description of Woodland Park. Certainly can be edited. Might even, you know, want to use a picture vice the verbiage. What are the core values of the city staff, more importantly than the city itself? And then, following that, is a brief description of what the individual would do. The city managers. And also describe the working relationship with the city council. The city council, all seven of us, are the city manager's boss. I can't imagine having that kind of relationship. But we need to let them know the potential candidate. You've got seven bosses. And this is how it works. And this is our form of government. We need to let them know, you know, we're a full-service city. We could point out that we have a police department, water and wastewater management as a service. We could list those if necessary. And then, of course, what is the budget? The budget, if you, we've got a preliminary salary study that tells us what the range of salaries are for city managers. of salaries are for city managers in cities of similar size, 5,000 to 12,000 individuals. I think some of the lower salaries on that range have to do with the fact that those cities have smaller budgets to manage. So we need to let the potential candidate know, this is how much money you're going to be dealing with. These are some of the duties, but certainly were not limited. These are extracted from that job description. And then that final one is from the city charter where I wanted to point out that someone with an engineering and architectural background would certainly be a desired qualification, if not required. Then there's a mom and apple pie statement, certainly not necessary. And then, actual experience, again, from that job description, education, job description, and then pointing out the residency requirement. Salary and benefits, you can put a generic statement in there that says it's commensurate with experience, but I think that that is going to limit or discourage candidates if we don't identify that salary range upfront. Deadline for filing, as I discussed before. Instructions on where to mail their cover letter and resumes and email addresses and snail mail address if necessary. Not too much different from the one that Val provided to us or that we received on Tuesday, but it does capture the CML recommended requirements for a job announcement and those that I know I needed to do as a federal employee. That's my presentation. I think where we go from here is back to the job description. I think we have an opportunity to tweak our job description, capture some of the recommendations that Val had or that any of the other council members have, and then go forward knowing that that job announcement must contain the job description and charter requirements. Nothing more, nothing less. Questions?
Think it's a great place to start, Council? Go ahead, Noel.
Wow, they're both good. I think both of them will bring in quality applicants. I have to agree with the salary thing because there was a time in my life where I actually looked for another job, believe it or not, and the first thing I did look at was the salary range. And if it wasn't within my requirements, I moved on, regardless of how great the job was. So my standard of living is a certain way, and so I have to have a certain salary. And I believe that, you know, that's very key to getting as many applicants as possible. I think our goal here, well, sorry, I'm congested. I think our goal here is to get as many applicants as possible, even if they don't fit into some of the qualifications. So when I look at certain applicant, when I look at certain job descriptions, I go, oh geez, I can't do that and that and that, but I can do majority of the other things. So will they just can me out of there? So maybe we should look at, I want as many applicants as possible, even if they don't fit with all the requirements. So both, I think both are great. I hope we can combine them, personally.
You spoke about salary.
Yeah, that's going to be a big one.
You want to step out with a number or a range or just start the conversation?
Suzanne said.
We want to do an executive session.
Okay.
Never mind.
Talk about that in executive session.
Fair enough.
Val?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I suggested in an email that went to the whole council that I think both work. I think for some venues or publications, we want brevity. I had a picture to describe Woodland Park. Click, you know, you want to work here kind of thing. But to Carol's point, it's, all these requirements I think are useful to go, and that's why I changed the job description or threw out some suggestions for the job description. I would like private sector managers at a certain level to be able to come here, too. And that's why I struck some things like municipal, not everywhere, but just a few places. I think we could have two, one for places that are going to charge by the word and some other, and of course, we can always put the big ones on the web, the free, free thing.
Personally, I would be against two. I would ask this, and then we can make that decision. Val, would you be comfortable with starting with Carol's from top to bottom, make any corrections, additions to that, and see what that looks like relative to yours? I don't know how much more 100 words is going to cost us. I don't, I'm sure it'll cost more, but I think it's beneficial to be uniform.
May I, sir? I would recommend that we start with, we have two authoritative documents that drive that job announcement. City charter, we're not changing the city charter.
Right.
And the job description. I would recommend that we first review the job description and address Val's concerns or any that the council may have that we can tweak this job description with, and then go back and look at the announcement.
That sounds good.
I agree with that. I think that's the right way to do it.
Okay.
And to your point with Carol's, once we tweak the job description, we can follow the template pretty close.
Well, it looks like we're really close to the same page anyway. Noel?
And see, Val brings my point, that if you put in certain words, it'll keep qualified applicants from coming in. So that's, I agree with him in getting rid of municipal. I know we're talking other things, but I think that's going to be key into this, is making sure there's not words that really.
I haven't done a side-by-side comparison to, but municipal may be in the charter if it is. It is. But it doesn't have to be in the job description.
Okay. Fair enough.
And this is all, I'm sorry. Go, go right ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is all brand new, within the last, what, 48 hours or something. I would suggest that, as Carol said, that we look at the job description first because that drives, whether it's hers or mine.
Or a combination.
Yeah, a combination of things.
Let me ask you this, Council. If, if we can go in executive session and discover a salary range, would the goal tonight be to finish this and have it posted as soon as possible? Is that, is that what we're looking to do? Do you imagine that we wait two more weeks before we posted it? Or if we don't come to some agreement? What's the, what's the goal for us? I thought the goal would be, I could be wrong, that tonight, we'll have it finished and we'll be able to post. Does everybody agree with that? If we can?
If we can.
If we can, sooner the better.
Okay.
I think minus a public salary, which is something we can't do.
Right, and we'll have an executive session after the council meeting tonight to do that. It looks like it's right in the middle of the meeting, but I'm going to wait on that to the end of the meeting. So Carol or Val, one of you start with the job description and go down the list, and we'll do what we need to do to get it right.
Does everyone have a copy of the?
Does everybody have this? Job description, great.
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
Thank you. So I took the, there's just one, a couple sections here that I thought to, and this is just a quick look. There might be others, but I think these are critical to moving on to the process that Carol has put together and I shortened. And it's in desired minimum qualifications. The additions are in blue, and I'm sorry, I didn't put it in my big, my big flow chart document that Mr. Butter is looking at. I'm sorry about that, but it's a separate, not only making more copies of this. And then there's some strikeouts that you can see. So this is directly out of the job description that we have seen. I just printed it out, like in this one. So just, just to go on, first one, graduation from accredited four-year college or university with a degree in public or business, I have that administration. I struck political science, but I'm not married to that change. It's just what kind of, I have a daughter who is a poli sci, and I would hate for her to be managing this town.
Sure should be glad to hear that.
And after business management, I added engineering or struck of, or a closely related field, and five years of experience as a division manager or equivalent and struck municipal administrator. So that's the first one. The second one I did was weigh down in necessary knowledge, skills, and abilities, which is, first one is working knowledge, and I struck municipal finance, corporate finance, if you have departments similar to fund accounting. I know that for a fact, being of that ilk. And the learning curve is not large. The next one, number two, I struck municipal once again for the same reason. Somebody at a corporate level should have an understanding of department budgets which are similar to our funds. Number three.
Excuse me, Val.
Sorry.
Just go back to two.
Yes.
And, but you didn't, you didn't strike municipal in directing and administering municipal programs.
One of the things, I know, I did this real quick, so.
I'm just asking.
One of the things I would like to do is, to Noel's point, is to make these preferences. So people understand that if they have this kind of thing, they're going to get bonus points, as we give bonus points to ex-military and vets and things like that. And I didn't put those words in here, but I'd like the council to consider those kinds of preference as opposed to demand requirements.
Could we then strike the word necessary knowledge, skills, and abilities and make that desired knowledge, skills, and ability?
Makes sense. Is that good with you?
Which line? Oh, up there, yes.
I mean, they're required and they're desired. I think all of those are desired, and you're right. It would provide us with a point system, but wouldn't preclude someone from not having all of those skills.
Yeah, that's an excellent, excellent point. So that goes to number two. I mean, these are, this are just my ideas. You guys have, there's seven of us up here.
Well, good. You know this group. If they don't agree, they will step up.
I think so.
Good, go ahead.
Number three, down at the last sentence, I've talked about ability to efficiently and effectively administer. I added division supervisors and struck a municipal government. Division supervisors, to me, can be program managers, they can be all kinds of things like that. I was trying to come up with a generic term for that level as opposed to an absolute. So that's just my term. It's not perfect. I'm not even thrilled with it, but the gist of it is I'm looking for a certain level and not just confine it to municipal government, once, again, to Noel Sawyer's point.
Can you make an distinction between division and department?
Yes.
Could you instead say first-line supervisor? Because if anything, we would refer back to what our, our structure is. Do we have divisions? Do we have departments?
We have departments.
I'm sorry. We do have departments, and within departments are divisions. So the department heads report to me, and division heads report to the different department heads.
Yeah, this is, this is the problem with, department heads reported to my division heads, but you know.
But in our structure, you have departments.
Yeah, exactly.
So we'll keep that as departments.
And then, in, I have no problem with any of those, but again, it goes back to semantics. In your first recommendation, five years' experience as a division manager, is there a more generic term, or should we use department or just first-line supervisor?
Yeah, I don't know how to term a high-level manager in a perfect world.
High-level manager?
That's, that's what I would, if I'm looking at resumes, I want to see a high-level manager, but that could mean all kinds of things.
Well, you, as a manager or equivalent.
Yeah.
If we just got rid of the word division and just said as a manager or equivalent.
We'll know it when we see it, I guess.
Absolutely. And to what Noel said, we want as many as possible, so we don't want to try to narrow it down too much, right?
When I do a Google search, I don't put the whole line in there, so.
Anyway, those are my only suggestions. I didn't go through with a fine-tooth comb everywhere else, but I think those are key to generating the job ad or the thing, the job announcement.
So you're good with the five years relative to the seven that you put in your initial one? You're good with that?
Whatever. That's up to the council.
No, I mean, you didn't change it in this, so I'm just guessing that that was.
I did them separately and didn't really.
Comments? Kent?
I think it sounds good that you discussed it. I had a question, I hope it's not out of line, but I was just curious, from your experience in this position, if you see anything that is left out or should be in here, if that's appropriate in answering that question.
I don't feel comfortable doing that. This is your described, job description for the person that you're going to hire. The changes that you have been suggested, I don't think are necessarily out of line with what the industry would look for.
And I think that's key. It is an industry. It is a special skill set. We're not hiring a dentist. We're hiring a city manager.
Yes.
Mayor, I would like to comment on the notion of changing what our desired minimum qualifications, worded now as necessary knowledgeable skills and abilities, to something that perhaps goes to a desired skills and abilities with rating for preferences. There is some recent case law in this area with regard to cases brought by people who are not hired, and I think the council would certainly benefit from an expert's advice on shifting from something that is a hard and fast requirement, that gives you the ability to say why these people were not hired, as opposed to a less hard and fast rating system. Again, it may be perfectly in line with what some of the cases are showing us and where those decisions are going, but I really do believe that the council should get that expertise and have that looked at.
Where, who would we ask to do that?
We would ask SERSA to see if they will at least allow us to use council who do this all the time, and they may be able to do that on a, some sort of a reduced budget. The other are the HR experts that were mentioned at the last meeting, and we have the ability to talk to those folks and sort of develop a scope as you get to these discussions for what they would be asked to price their proposal on. So that would be the other option. I think that the attorneys who provide advice on these kind of litigation to municipal clients on this all the time would be the quicker route, and perhaps we'd be able to do that soon.
So if we were to make minimum changes based on input from the council tonight, and then before it could be posted, we would have to have this review done?
And one thing, thank you, Mayor Portman, I wanted to add, we also are members of Mountain State's Employee Council. Their new name now is Employee Council, and they are, all they do is deal in HR matters, have job descriptions. We can have them look at it, and it's part of our membership fee.
Oh, okay.
Well, we don't see any doubt. We don't see any doubt.
Yeah, I would tell you, I think they are great, and I think they provide great expertise, but I think the best expertise will come from the lawyers who litigate these all the time. So if we, it could be some combination of that, I think that would be very helpful.
So let me just clarify, you're saying remove the word desired, because then that sets boundaries?
I'm suggesting that we have that reviewed by someone who can tell us whether or not that is a, create some risk with regard to the hiring process.
It's too loose of a word.
Correct.
Okay, I understand that part. And I agree with that. I mean, we have to have a base, a bottom line, and we have a few applicants that are below that. Well, that's easy. We see you later. So, okay?
I guess I would suggest that then we remove municipal everywhere in there, but there's only one other occurrence that I can see, just in case it goes to whatever, which is in line two. Ministry, last word in line two. Yeah.
Well.
I know, I know.
We're hiring a municipal administrator. Why would you want to strike that?
Well, so that, we tried to, we tried to make it expansive, and then right there, we've limited somebody who's private sector, for instance, who's never done municipal.
Which I would be unlikely to hire, but nonetheless. Which I would be unlikely to hire, but nonetheless, again-
Maybe we ought to think about that part. I don't, I'm not, you know, I didn't initially strike it, but maybe once we get the advice-
What if we were to modify it and say, five years' experience as a municipal or private sector administrator, you cover both bases?
Bingo. I like it.
That's in number one.
And in all the way through.
All the way through.
Municipal or private sector.
Sure.
So you got this, isn't it?
Maybe if we come up with this description, maybe we could get a really fast turnaround on it to make sure that what we thought we heard, we did, memorialized and hard copied.
I'll try my best.
Not tonight, I'm not saying.
What else, council?
Do we go into descriptions now that we're done with the minutia of doing this? I would like to see some things.
What would you like?
I would like a person, and I've been very appreciative of buttery, but I would like a person who understands the importance of a positive public relationship, including communications with the public media, and is able, is skilled in public speaking. I would like to see that as part of the description. I would also like a person who understands transportation, having a state highway, commerce, public transportation, highway, CDOT, one who will be able to communicate and actually work with CDOT and Keller County, as the commissioners are very important in running the county and also coming into Woodland Park. Yes, we represent Woodland Park, but we also have to be, have the abilities to work with the people around us, the communities around us. Also, we have a unique situation with our schools. We have a hospital here, urgent care, medical centers, having understandings in those areas are extremely important, that the person can be bonded and is a U.S. citizen or is legal to obtain a job in the United States and work it, either he or she, whoever it is, that those criterias are met. So those are a few of my injections into it without going down the list and going through a whole thing.
Counsel, you have thoughts on Paul's comments? Kind of limit, it's opposite of what you're saying, Val, because it limits a little bit.
Yeah, I'd like to see the writing first, I guess.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, Noel.
Okay, so I look at Val's job description. I think this is Val's. This was an email?
No, it's this thing.
That's the correction to the job-
Right, but he was looking at the job description there.
Yeah.
His, what he was talking about was addressed in number three, and what I believe was an email that Val sent out said, "Provides professional advice to the city council and department heads, makes presentation to councils, boards, commissions, civic groups, and the general public."
That's part of the 2015 job description.
So it's already there?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
What I want to see.
No, okay, well, that's good.
And to, in that job description from, it's 2015, it does talk about communicating official plans, policies, procedures to the staff and the general public. You know, you might want to take a look at that one and see if it does address-
I've gone through a bunch of it. I've been sick. My wife has been sick. I've been doing my homework. I got my notes. I have to concentrate on what I wrote. If it's in there, I'm happy.
I think the most important of those duties and responsibilities, though, is that the individual maintains harmony.
Absolutely.
There it is. It's all-
I don't want no condensating, sending situations.
Maintain harmony. That is the job description.
I want them to be able to work with the police and all the services that we have, city services. I think that's covered. It's important that they work with all the heads, that he works with all the heads of the department. I also believe in this process, that these department heads should be able to meet these people who are coming and have input into the council about their feelings. I don't want to cut the department head out, but it is the council's decision to make, and it's right for the council to make that decision.
Would it, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
Would it be possible to, I mean, I produced this thing, you guys have seen this for three weeks, it's got the nice flow chart and all this stuff, and all's, this is how I keep track of my notes, okay? So I threw stuff in here, I threw the job description in here, but the first three, as Carol says, there's three things we got to do right away on her slide. Job title, we got that. City manager, job description, we're talking about that, and then the job announcement. I think if we memorialize whatever this is and quickly broadcast it out to the council, as long as it's the same thing we had in the public meeting, we can go, right? Is that, I'm suggesting.
I would hope we could do that.
I don't know why not.
How long would, like Carol brought up, how long would the review take for, to have a review of it?
I would, I would hope that we could get that done.
Is that, I mean, a week, so? Would we have to have another meeting to approve it?
Yeah, you might get some comments back that you could review. Again, I don't think that you have to necessarily have a meeting. You could review those offline in the way that you've been reviewing them with the city clerk dispersing the emails and obtaining comments.
So maybe, so maybe it's just we'll decide whether we need a meeting based on what suggestions they make. How about that?
Or can we approve with SERSA's blessings? Could we do that tonight if we come to a decision?
Sure, absolutely.
And it would say something like, as long as SERSA agrees?
Subject to the input from the expert, but it will-
So what we would be presenting to that expert would be the modifications to the job description, and then we would proceed with the job announcement.
You have to make those changes.
Yeah.
That's correct. Really only the first two steps.
Yeah. I mean, I think the most critical thing for them is going to be the minimum qualifications. The job, what are also known as the job requirements. That's going to be the key concern.
Out of the job description, so far as I can tell, the description is, sign-on information technology, security, virtual, etc., we go by the ID, we go by the company's, you say, skills.
I thought it was in there a little bit. I thought there was, well, if I look at this one here, it says, "Prepare and submit to the council. Such reports is may be required by the body." I mean, I would assume they know how to type on Word.
Well, there is a-
Ability to prepare and analyze comprehensive reports, ability to carry out signed projects. So it's there.
Yeah, I mean, it even requires that the individual know how to use a fax machine. I'm not sure that's-
As they get out of the cave.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe we're moving into new technology, and as a city, we want to be a part of that movement, and so, yes, the word is focused towards that.
Now, that is a section of the job description that I really didn't look at that closely. As I look at it now, it is a little bit antiquated. It says, "Special requirements: A valid state driver's license." Sure, makes sense. "Tools and equipment: Requires frequent use of a personal computer to include word processing and spreadsheet programs, a calculator, a telephone, a copy machine, and a fax machine." Should we, I mean, tools and equipment use are important, but is, we can leave it in, we can delete it.
That's words we don't need.
The sad part is, is that, is that I'm the IT guy, and here, I just ignored that part and assumed that we would be okay because we're getting an IT department. So it's really, it's neither here nor there. I mean, everybody knows how to use a computer, I hope.
Yeah, I'm not too concerned right now. Paul, question for you. With what, kind of the outline that we've got, your questions and your concerns, could that not be questions that we ask the folks once they come to us?
It most certainly can, because I have a list of questions that cover this.
So-
Understand zoning, understand transit.
Sure. So would you be okay, my question is, would you be okay if we left that out and then we follow up when we have the individual applicants?
I would make that as a criteria for looking at applicants and questioning them to see their abilities. I have no problem with that.
Great.
As long as it's taken into consideration.
So, council, where do you see us going now?
Well, I think we provide the cleaned-up version of the job description, because we cannot alter the charter's description.
Great.
And then allow the city attorney to have it reviewed by either SERSA or whomever she believes can do it most quickly. Get that back to us, and let us then, from that process, at least by the next meeting, be prepared to review the job announcement and get it on the, get it on the streets.
Any downside to that, other than we'll lose a couple of weeks?
We should only lose, yeah, one, two-week period.
I know no one's happy with that, but we want to make sure we're legal, and of course, we could call a special meeting sometime after it's been reviewed and approved and make a decision then, or we could wait for two weeks. I know everyone's anxious to get it posted, but, council, what are your thoughts on that?
I think we need to do it right. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I think we need to do it right, and if it takes two weeks, it takes two weeks to get reviewed, come back, we'll get an applicant, we'll get people coming for the job.
I agree with you, Paul. Everybody agree with that? Go ahead, Doc.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know some of us up here don't like to look at flow charts, but it's very, it's very concise in how we do things, so I would ask that the council, in addition to reviewing what we get back, start to look at these processes going down here, because that will be where, how, where and how we set up. I suggested we set up a Google Drive with special restrictions as an input. That's how a lot of things are done these days, including most hiring firms, as opposed to email. These are all suggestions, and so I would suggest that we jump on that as a council in addition to what we're looking at, so that in two weeks, we're ready to go. With whatever method we decide, this has a parallel method with a national hiring firm, of course, and a flow there. So I would, I would request the rest of the council, look at this or change it, do something else, I don't care, but I think in order to get to a place where we can start accepting ads, we need to consider those process items.
And so this will give us two weeks to do that?
Right, exactly. That's what I'm suggesting.
Noel?
I do suggest a special meeting, and the reason why is that, is that if CML or whoever this HR individual is recommends some changes, we can have a special meeting, deal with that subject only, and not have to waste the time of the public here, and then when we come in in two weeks, we can approve it right away. It can go out that night or that next morning. Instead of having to hash it out again, make some more adjustments, and then we've delayed the process even more.
So if SERSA comes back, or whoever we have examined, comes back and says everything's good-
We're good, let's go.
-two weeks from now, we're good to go.
We just say-
If we have any issues before that, your suggestion is to have a special meeting to handle that situation, so that at our next meeting, we're good to go.
I believe that is the most, the best route to go, the easiest, because we will be dealing with that one subject at a special meeting.
And maybe you could schedule a meeting somewhere, it would be on the calendar and the notices could go out, but you could cancel it if you didn't think you had it.
That's correct.
When we present this to SERSA, we could ask them approximately how long it's going to take, tell them what our constraints are, and they can help us in that regard. Okay. Sounds good. Suzanne?
Point of clarification. Is it the expectation of the council that I make the changes on this job description and send it back to the council, or is that something that Councilman McCarr or Harvey will be doing?
My recommendation, Suzanne, and I know your plate is full with upcoming election, but I would recommend that you capture that and then send it out to all council members.
Do you have the notes?
I have the tape.
Yeah, okay.
Which is how I would do it myself.
And to give Suzanne a little direction, relative to the announcement, anyway, I think she'll be pretty well set on, on the job description. Relative to the announcement, you think she should start with one or the other of your recommendations, or what's the decision there? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you. I think, once we clarify to what we've talked about here, we can start with Carol's.
Okay.
And shorten it to mine with a picture if we want for other venues.
Sounds like you love the picture.
Well, I do. I love living here. This is a great place. I mean, who doesn't love living here?
No, I'm just kidding. All right, that sounds good. Everybody, Paul?
I want to say, this has been very civil, and I'm very, very, very pleased with the outcome that we're having here tonight. I think we can accomplish this in two weeks. I see no problems.
We still have executive session when we're done with this meeting, so we can include salary scope at some point, and so we will be ready to go in two weeks, and if there's nothing else, we're going to move on. Okay, we're on agenda item number seven, ordinances on initial posting, and Suzanne Leclair.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening, as we have done, and we do every year, we are doing an initial posting on announcing the form of publication that the city will use for all of their public notices and different things like that. So the revised Charter, Section 1512, last year that was changed, gave us the opportunity to be able to post things just by title only, and then post the entire ordinance on the website. It saves the city money, it seems to be working, we've done it for a year now, and my recommendation, and I'm asking that council, this is just an initial posting, that's what I would like to continue to do if council so agrees.
Thank you, Suzanne. Council, you know the process here. Unless you have any questions, call for motion to consider ordinance number 1316. So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you, Mo Chee-Carries.
Thank you very much. No public hearings tonight. We'll move on to new business and start with Resolution 822, and Suzanne?
Thank you, Mayor Levy. As Ms. Harvey mentioned earlier, we're smack in the middle of an election, and I, part of my job is to let the council know how the election, what kind of election we're doing. So I have a resolution here, it's Resolution Number 822. It's a resolution establishing the form and procedures for the April 3, 2018, regular municipal election, and whereas pursuant to the Home Rule Charter of the City of Woodland Park, the regular municipal election will be held on April 3, 2018, and whereas the city council desires to establish the form and procedures for the regular municipal election, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Woodland Park, Section 1, that the regular municipal election for the City of Woodland Park, held on April 3, 2018, shall be conducted as a mail ballot election, following the Colorado State statutes concerning mail ballot elections and utilizing rules and regulations promulgated by the Secretary of State for the conduct of mail ballot elections. And Section 2, that the method of voting shall be the Secretary of State-approved AccuVote system under the direct supervision of the Teller County Clerk and Recorder pursuant to an IGA. It's very, very standard.
Questions, counsel? April 3 election, when will these ballots go out, Suzanne?
March 13.
March 13. No questions? We are in public comment. So, if anyone from the audience would like to speak on number 9A, this would be the time. Okay, if not, we'll call for motion to approve Resolution 822.
You can approve Resolution 822, I presume.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Carr?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we'll move on to 9B, and Kip Wiley approving Resolution Number 823.
Thank you. Resolution 823 is establishing the single-family water tap allotment for 2018. This is in front of you due to our code and our city's water tap management plan. The purpose of establishing the annual allotment is so growth within the city stays compatible with the city's water supply. The recommended amount of taps for 2018 is at 80, the same as 2017. This is based off the current water tap planning number of 729, which the code specifies that no more than 60 or 10% of that number. However, it's at 80 because we have not sold that, all the taps in the previous year, and there is also a borrow bank that includes 20 from the borrow bank. So, the 60 from the water tap planning number and the 20 from the borrow bank were a total of 80. So, I'm asking to approve Resolution 823, establishing single-family water tap allotment at 80 for 2018.
Our number was 80 for this year, correct, for '17, excuse me?
It's been 80 for a long time.
And we have 20 from the borrow bank. That doesn't mean we use 60. How many do we use in 2017?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. That's how many more than 2016?
Twenty.
And 2015? And he knows all the answers.
Uh, 29, yeah, 29. So, for, for tap sales, since you asked, we sold 46 this year, 26 last year, 17 the year before, 11 the year before that, 6, 5, 7, and 4.
So, you see why the big smile on Kip's face. Increased revenue. Questions to Kip, no?
Hey, Kip. So, we got a big development over in Stone Ridge. How many do you think is going to be used up there?
If I were to guess, they'll probably, most of them be used up in 2018. There were 28 lots that were planted in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Everybody else? We are in public comment? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No.
We are in public comment relative to Resolution Number 823, if anybody would like to. Okay, if not, call for motion to approve Resolution 823.
I'll make a move in a second.
Suzanne?
Matthews?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
We don't say it enough, Kip. Great job. Great job. Okay, we'll move on to item 9C, and Val, you are in charge.
So, the, the council allocates some money in the budget each year for community investment funding. There's various historical precedents for how things are done, but this year, we, the committee considered our Chair, Darwin Nakarado, Sue Griswold, who was here earlier, Bruce Caldwell, Marty McKenna, Susan Leclerc, and myself as the council liaison. So, that's, Darwin's very sick tonight, so I'm going to give the report. In December 2007, we had some history and the purpose, objective...
Settling?
Background, I'm giving a background.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm me too.
2007, okay.
I should have said so. So, some background, in December 2007, city council created Community Investment Funding Review Committee. Its purpose and objective is restated as follows: to create a fair and equitable means to process applications for community investment funding, to establish a formal program for application and review, to establish reasonable limits for funding, to create appropriate guidelines to ensure fairness and consideration. The number of applications for the 2018 funding, which we evaluated in 2017, but it's for 2018 budget, were solicited on October 1, 2017, contingent upon approval, which we finally did later on in December. A total of 19 applications were received. We extensively reviewed each applicant and application prior to meeting on December 12, 2017. We then requested and formulated our recommendation to the council. The total funding requested from 19 applicants was $36,830. The city's budget for 2018 was allocated 20,000 for that line item, so we had to do some manipulations to maneuver under that number of 20,000. The application packets for each of the 19 requests were on file in the clerk's office, their public record. If you'd like to review them, please give Suzanne Leclerc a call and she will have them available for you to review. So, we have produced a spreadsheet matrix, and I don't intend to read it all, but counsel, you have it in front of you. Is it, is it your desire that I read off all the...
Let's see what I...
Here, you can use my...
Oh, thank you.
Maybe I'm the only one that hasn't come.
Does everybody else have this or...
I think it was in the packet. Yeah, it was in the packet.
Great.
Anyway. Mr. Mayor, do you want to read them all?
Let's go through it, absolutely. We want to hear what you decided.
Thank you. Well, not me.
No, I understand. I understand. I think everybody knows.
Community covered Woodland Park, requested $6,500. We allocated 2,000, oops, I skipped a line.
You did.
Choices requested 10,080. We allocated 750.
1,080?
One, I'm sorry. Yes, 1,080. We allocated 750 to them. Cruze Above the Clouds requested 5,000. We gave them 1,500. Daybreak requested 2,000. We gave them 1,000. Eric Dixon Memorial Project, they, this is a one-time deal, so we gave them, they requested 1,000, we gave them 1,500. They won't be back. Gardeners with Altitude, $1,000, we gave them 150. Help the Needy requested 2,500. We allocated 2,000 to them. Junior Achievement requested 1,000. We gave 500. Little Chapel Food Pantry requested 1,250. We gave them 1,250. Mountaintop Cycling requested 600 for operating costs. We don't fund operating costs per agreement with the council, so they didn't get anything. They got zero. Teller County Search and Rescue requested 3,000. We gave them 1,500. Teller County Vida requested 600. We gave them 300. Teller Senior Coalition requested 2,000. We gave them 750. The Storehouse requested 2,500. We gave them 2,000. Utte Pass Symphony Guild requested 2,500. We gave them 2,000. Welcome Home Warrior that requested 1,000. We gave them 1,000. Woodland Music Series requested 1,500. We gave them 1,000. Woodland Park Community Singers requested 1,000. We gave them 150. Woodland Park Senior Citizens Organization requested 800. We recommended allocating 650 to those people, and the total is 20,000 per budget recommendation by the council. Any questions?
I got one obvious one to me. I know it's a one-time deal, but it just doesn't make sense to me that we give more than was asked, considering everybody else on here, for the most part, was, was cut. So, can you, can you help me understand that?
So, the feeling of the committee was that because it was a one-time deal and their budget is extraordinarily high, we have, we have all the backup to these things, which is not here, but Suzanne hasn't been in her office for anybody to see, is such that we felt, since it was a one-time deal, that we were going to try to help them a little bit more than their $1,000 request.
Had they not raised 50 or 60,000 on their own already?
I don't have the number in front of me. I don't know.
A big amount.
They've raised a large amount.
They're still short, but they're...
Anyone else see what I see there?
I, I had the same question because I certainly support the project, but are they in fact a 501(c)(3)?
They are. We were a lot stricter this year about 501(c)(3)'s and net worth and things like that. You can guess who brought that up. But that, we were much stricter on those things. We actually followed through on that with several different entities on this and including calling on our city attorney to give us a ruling on church-related 501(c)(3)'s. Maybe she could speak to that, if possible, or not?
Oh.
Sure.
Sure.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh, no, no. The, the question came up whether or not, in the past, the Community Investment Fund Committee had come to council with recommendations to fund certain organizations that did have some religious aspect, religious connection. And the question came up as to whether or not, in light of some recent Supreme, well, I'm not sure if the question askers were aware of some recent Supreme Court cases, but the question did come up. And in light of the case law as it stands, based on United States Supreme Court decisions, clearly what I advise the committee is that they not exclude religious organizations. Because as the case law stands at this point, to exclude religious organizations and treat them differently would give rise to the possibility of a Establishment Clause claim. Now, this is First Amendment law. It does tend to change rapidly, and so, you know, this is something that I think to the committees, to their, for their information, it's something that probably should be looked at again next year and to the, for council's information, it should be looked at again next year.
Thank you.
But in terms of the Eric F. Dixon Memorial Project, my question was, are they a 501(c)(3)? The answer is yes.
They are, yeah. And let me, let me qualify that, if you would, just a second. Pardon me for interrupting you, but some, under 501(c)(3) law, there's, there's a thing called a subordinate clause, and several, many organizations in Teller County, several, are subordinate organizations to a, an umbrella, what they call an umbrella 501(c)(3). This is one of those.
Who were they under?
I can't remember. You'd have to look on their application. I believe that's true. Okay? I believe that's true.
If we go back to the, I, I don't know if I would call this bylaws for the Community Investment Fund. It says, has some other title, but it does, it does talk about 501(c)(3)'s. It is not a requirement to be awarded any money from this particular fund. There is recommended. I think we've had that discussion last year. But because the city is going to provide real estate for the Dixon Memorial, I don't see anything wrong with taking, they asked for 1,000, and I know they're trying to reach that, that goal of whatever it's going to cost to actually commission the statute. Give them 1,000, and we don't have to spend every last penny, and maybe we could reserve that for mid-cycle or out-of-cycle requests. I know a couple of organizations have come to me and said, you know, we've missed, we missed the deadline. What if we came in with a mid-cycle request? This document does allow that. I, I am totally in support of this memorial project, but I, I would recommend if they ask for 1,000 and we have it, give them 1,000, take that 500 and reserve it for a mid-cycle request or out-of-cycle request.
That's certainly at the discretion of the council. The whole thing is discretion of the council. I made the case for several other things, including a mid, mid-season pool of money out of this. I lost my argument, but I made a case for that in the committee, so it fits right in with, with that. I also suggested that, well, I'll just leave it at that.
Well, and I, I can imagine what you were going to say, and the point is, this is tough action. Where do you put the money? And it's always, it's always difficult. I think you guys did a great job. My only thing, like, like Carol said, I wouldn't mind putting that 500 towards something. We don't have to put it. We could go mid-season, whatever. I too, as we all are, we've all expressed our support for the Dixon Memorial Project. I've never seen where we've given more than was asked. Let's think about it for a minute while we have a couple of people that would like to comment, at least one. Phil Layton, would you like to come forward?
I'd like to thank the committee because...
I'm sorry, Phil. Phil, excuse me, you know the protocol. Could you give us your name and address and see if that microphone's on?
Phil Layton, 1520 Evergreen Heights.
Thank you, sir.
I'm the chairman of the Cruze Above the Clouds. I want to thank Val and this committee. They did an excellent job in making sure that everybody had their, their forms in right, their budgets were right, and they came up with the conclusion that they did with the monies. We're pleased to be part of the Community Investment Fund. I can tell you that of the 19 charities that you have here, we participated in 15 of them, and we donated back to those charities and a couple service organizations over $27,000 this year. So, we, we appreciate the work that the city does for us and that we do for the community. And on behalf of the Cruze Above the Clouds, I want to thank you.
Thank you very much, Phil. This is one of those discussions, who's thanking who? We appreciate everything you do, for sure. It's, it's amazing.
And may I say something that just goes to show that support, Cruising Above the Clouds, actually gives more back. What a great, and it brings so many people and so much interest into this town.
And you could argue that almost everyone on there may not return financially, but certainly returns service or any number of things to our community. So, we should thank all those organizations too. I know, again, who's thanking who? I know they'll be grateful for the money, but we've got a great community and everyone, a, a big part of them are represented here. Let's get back to our conversation about, you know, I'm not going to fall on my sword on this because I'm a big favor of, of the project. I'm just not really, not really in favor of the process. No?
I have faith in the CIF. I think they had all the information in front of them. They came to the right decisions. I think if they felt that this memorial needed a little bit more money to help speed up their process, and it's a one-time allotment of money, I think it's okay. I don't, I don't see a major ordeal there. I believe Val and the committee had enough information in front of them, and they made that call for a very good reason.
Good. Anyone else, Val?
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to mention a couple other things. Phil tweaked my mind to those. One of the things we looked at here is net worth. Somebody asking for 1,000 who's got 4.5 million in the bank would sort of said, hmm, you know, is it a token or not? So, we, so we had some of that in our calculations this year. We had a more extensive but simplified application process. We actually had available people to help them this year through the process. We helped... We helped several people, as Phil said. The other, other thing that we continue to have a discussion about is the city provides tremendous in-kind to this, of these organizations. And from an accounting standpoint, I, I know it's, it's a difficult thing to account for, but we really believe there's huge in-kind monies being extended by the city that aren't, aren't visible when we show this twenty thousand. The city is really giving more than twenty thousand. They're giving hundreds of thousands in police support and parks, wrecked grounds, and all kinds of things. I would like to suggest that if there's a possible way to quantify those as events come, you know, some of the biggest events are, are a little more obvious than the daily grind that the city staff has to go through. I'm not suggesting we start a time card thing with that. But the in-kind is tremendous in this, in this city that the staff puts forward for all these organizations. And I would like to see some sort of accountability for that, even if it's a wild wag, as we call it.
Is your two-hundred thousand a wag?
Probably.
Yeah?
Yeah, I would suggest to you that the, as I look down this list, we provide minimal support for Cruises Above the Clouds. The park and electricity and, I think, porta-potties. An off-duty police officer usually supports track cleanup, et cetera. I'm looking down the list.
July 5th, U. Pass Symphony.
Yeah, the U. Pass Symphony Guild, surely the Symphony Above the Clouds. We provide some significant police support. Our Parks, Buildings and Ground Crew that works that day, that's actually a donation that they make to that effort. We don't pay them for that. There's two people from that crew that, that, they're, what they give back to the community. So I would suggest to you, it's nowhere near a couple hundred thousand dollars. It's probably closer to five thousand total for, for the entire list.
Excellent. I, I wasn't aware that they were donating time and stuff, so that's good to know.
And even if they were paid, that would maybe be several hundred dollars.
I don't want to fall on my sword either. About five hundred dollars extra for the Dixon Memorial. But we had discussed when they, when the group made their presentation of coming up with some guidelines for future use of Memorial Park for similar statues, whatever you want to call it. We, we need to do that. And I don't know if as a council, if we need to ask the staff to do that or if that's a future project that you can work on. Because there will be others who will come forward and ask for pieces of property in Memorial Park. And again, I don't want to fall on my sword on it. I, I kind of had a thought that we could set aside the five hundred dollars for out-of-cycle requests, but maybe five hundred dollars is, is not that big of a deal.
Great. There's no other conversation if we can have a motion to approve the expenditures from the Community Investment.
I move we approve the expenditures as presented. I'm okay with that five hundred.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Suonier? Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer? Harvey?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you move on, just for council's clarification and perhaps those in the audience that may be here or listening, as far as midterm reviews go or requests, council always has the ability to modify budgets. So if you get a mid-year request, as long as we can find, from the finance perspective, the ability to fund that, you can certainly honor those requests. It would just require a modification to the budget. So the door's not completely closed. It's in your hands as those budget decisions are always.
Thank you. I don't see any of the Community Investment members. They were here and most of them are left, with the exception of Suzanne and Val. I just want to thank all of you. This is, this is a tough process with limited funds this year and once again, a great job. So thank you all very, very much.
I want to also thank Chrissy and Suzanne for the tremendous work and staff support. Chrissy sits in and takes, and does her spreadsheet dynamically. Both of them are tremendous help.
Thank you. Okay. Move on to public comment on items not on the agenda. I've got a little list and we'll start with Elijah Murphy.
Good evening, folks. I'm Elijah Murphy. I operate the Historic Unit at 204 West Midland Avenue in Woodland Park. Mayor Levy, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak for you this evening. Mayor Levy made a comment at the last meeting about the word transparency being an overused word. Being in a small town here, we all know that sometimes it's not always the most overused concept, however. Tonight, we all stood up and we set a pledge of allegiance and to the republic for which it stands. What is the republic? Well, the republic is not a democracy. No matter how you, how often you hear it on the news, in fact, the word democracy never appears in our constitution. And the difference between a democracy and a republic are very wide. A democracy constitutes mob rule or the rule of the majority body. And the republic prevents the mob from ruling because we operate under the law of land. The republic refers to that public thing, the law. So local politics do rely, to a certain degree, on democracy. Decide on who will act and who will be our public servants and who will enforce those laws. And when everyone operates under the laws in absolute transparency, we have a pleasant and peaceful society. However, there are those who oftentimes think that achieving office or being hired into a position or whatever places them above the law or that they become the law. I've actually had a cop tell me, no, I am law. And that was kind of a bad moment. Yeah. Okay, for instance, one of our, one of our laws within the Constitution of Colorado is that, or one of the laws within, across the board in the land, is that the law be written in the common language so that the common man can stand out and understand it. Okay, I've been asked on more than one opportunity, when I presented the law and read the law verbatim, that people come to me and ask me where I got my law degree. Okay? Well, I didn't get a law degree. And for instance, the, last I checked, the First Amendment has not changed. It had never been rewritten. The only thing that changes is the opinions. Okay? It becomes opinion. All right? There's a requirement in the law that is called the reasonable person test that when it comes to conflicts of interest, such as in the Colorado Constitution, or actually in the Colorado laws, and that law, okay, the Colorado Constitution states that if a reasonable justification of conflict of interest exists, then a conflict of interest exists. Okay? This is especially true when it comes to fiduciary responsibilities. And when fiduciary enters the job description and responsibility, it means that it involves money. Okay? For instance, the city manager has a fiduciary responsibility to everybody to manage the budget and prepare that budget for y'all's approval, which is done in a democratic process because we all vote on it. All right? And those monies are doled out to 501(c) organizations and such as the Chamber of Commerce. Okay? The Chamber of Commerce receives over forty thousand dollars a year in public funding to operate its, the visitor's center for the city of Woodland Park. However, I got to noticing that, that if you don't belong to the Chamber of Commerce, you can't put your stuff in the visitor's center, a publicly funded place. Okay? And that, that doesn't seem like it's on the teamwork agenda. That when a place is publicly funded, that every business should be invited to come and be part of this. Okay? Because it all revolves around when visitors come here, we want them to buy stuff here. But if they don't know about a place, they can't buy. No sales, no tax revenues. Tax revenues are what drive our engine. I know we get some, we get some, probably some grants and we get some outside money, but I would bet a dollar to a donut that the bulk of our revenues come from sales tax. And promoting the businesses here is very, very important to me. Not just for myself, okay? It's, I, I really want to see the level playing field out there and where everybody is part of the city. All right? Startup business, I, I know people in the startup businesses around here, they can't afford two hundred bucks right now to go and join the chamber if that's what the fee would be for them. But I would love to see them inside the visitor's center because for the simple fact that they're collecting sales tax for the city. You know, it ought to be equal opportunity. I learned today that the decision was made by Mr. Jim Weir, who operates Pro Promotions, to move the Salute to Veterans outside of Woodland Park. Okay? And I know the city, we have a lot of veterans on the board and I know it's very near and dear to our hearts. Okay? I really liked that rally. Okay? I know right now it doesn't drop a lot of change in this town because of the way it's set up. However, about five thousand vets, veterans, dirty biker veterans, show up. Like me. To ride in that parade. And I just sat down and I just ran a quick, little, five thousand people dropping ten dollars apiece equals, times point zero seven nine, equals three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars in tax revenues. Now imagine if we set it up so that they would drop twenty bucks apiece? That would more than double the amount of tax revenues require, or that, that would be more than double the amount that they pay right now to operate. If we brought our 501(c)(3)'s in, if we brought to, set up a pancake breakfast, to sell things, to bring vendors in. Let Main Street do it. That's part of their job, is finding the volunteers to make things like that happen and organize things like that. Maybe not to operate them, but to promote them and make things happen. I'd rather see, what, about eight thousand dollars in tax revenues for about four or five-hour draw? Showing that we appreciate our veterans? Because I'll promise you, whenever it moves out of town, that's kind of a null thing for me because I might just shut my business down for the day and go hang out with those guys. And as I said, no sales, no tax revenues. We have an aging population up here. I don't have any thirty-five-year-olds running in to try and buy my business today. Okay? These businesses are going to get more and more scarce as more and more people prefer and rightfully so, I get it. To the younger generation, the quality of life is so much more important. If we worked as a team, we can improve everybody's quality of life. Okay? If we work to expand things. Okay, so what's the difference between Cruises Above the Clouds and the biker rally? Old cars, old bikes? I'm kind, okay, and I understand bike rallies, veterans. Okay? So I would rather see us work with somebody like Pro Promotions or whoever who wants to come here and organize events or bring music into town or bring whatever into town to increase the sales tax revenues. Because, I'm sorry, whenever I sit down and I look at the debt service on the pool of ninety-six thousand a month, three thousand dollars, three thousand dollars a year for a motorcycle rally. All right? And I really want to thank you guys for, you know, going with the, moving the, talking about moving the Eric Dixon Memorial. I've, I've donated from my business. I've donated over four thousand dollars to date for that memorial. I'm, I wasn't a Marine, but I stand with anybody and everybody that might have been in the military, whether they be Air Force, Marine, Army, or Navy. It doesn't matter to me. Okay? It's always about teamwork. It's always about coming up with the ideas. It's always about promoting things and coming up with creative, creative solutions as opposed to just moving things down the road. Because if we keep just moving things down the road, as I've explained to people, we've got what, twenty thousand people in this county? All right? And we keep, I keep hearing this saying, leakage down the pass. I'm sorry, twenty thousand people, that's, you know, okay, if we're bringing five thousand dollars, what is that, ten million a month? Or a hundred million a month? All right? We only, we all only have so much disposable income. We've got to create events up here, okay, to drive our economic engine. Because there's seven hundred and fifty thousand people down there. If we can tap into ten percent of that per month, Woodland Park will have a whole lot more money to operate on. Okay? So, hey, I appreciate the job you guys are doing. You're doing an awesome job. You have a very thankless job. And when selecting the new city manager, can we get somebody maybe that kind of gets it? Okay? I mean, I know it's a thankless job, David. I, I've seen where you're sitting a lot of times. And I know you don't smile up there a lot, but we'd like to see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Tanner Coy. Next, Hillary LaBarre.
Hi, I'm Hillary LaBarre, 185 Glendale Drive, Woodland Park. Just wanted to thank the council and all the city admin for being here tonight and taking the time that you do. It is a thankless job and I wanted to announce it as a position that I'm running for. I brought business cards with me, so if anyone would like to have a card so they can have my email or number and get in touch with me and ask me about my positions, you're welcome to.
Excuse me one second. Excuse me one second, sir.
Ma'am, the state law does not allow us to let you campaign. Here you, you have announced, you submitted your application, but we just can't let you do campaigning.
Okay.
And that's what this would be doing.
My apologies.
So an announcement is fine, but beyond that, we just need to ask you to...
That's correct. And you, you certainly cannot ask for the vote of anyone from the podium.
Sure.
Thank you. For understanding.
Absolutely.
When will our board be, the twenty-second of?
January.
January?
What for?
No, the, when we have the candidate's forum, when will that be?
Oh, uh, March.
March thirteenth.
That, that will be your forum, March thirteenth.
Thank you for understanding.
Great. Thank you, Hillary. Okay, last, Michael Dalton. He's last on this list.
You need to help him with his presentation.
Right here. Thank you. My name's Michael Dalton. I'm, I live at 413 Woodland Avenue. I'm not going to play it yet. Okay. I just want to preface this or two things. I want to address something that was talked about earlier a little bit, about the job description and making sure that we get the right candidates in. There are...
Can you state your name and address, please?
Oh, I did.
You did? I didn't hear it.
Yeah. There are almost as many cellphone subscribers in the world as there are people. There are some rough estimates. I couldn't find the exact number, but six point eight billion subscriptions. These are active cellphone subscribers. There's only about seven billion people in the world. In 2013, there were four billion cellphone users in the world. And some estimates in 2019 will move more cellphone subscriptions than there are people in the world. If you go to our website right now, any one of you, I encourage you to, you won't be able to look at it on your phone very well. It's not, it's not because it's not there. It's not because it's not easy to get to. It's, a few years back, people started using the term mobile-friendly, right? In November, the head of our marketing department, the best that I could tell, stood up here at the council and said that in this year, we're going to look to make a mobile-friendly website. This is a term that most people in the web business don't even use anymore. We make mobile websites. We don't make mobile-friendly websites. If we're going to announce this job on our website, let's go after that six point eight billion people because nobody looks at our website. It's a, it would be a waste of your advertising dot... It's, uh, it would be a waste of your advertising dollars to put anything on the city's website, the chamber's website. And the best website, and it's not even a good one, is the Main Street website, and it's the best out of the three. Um, it loads the fastest. There are statistics that are coming out today that if a website doesn't load in three seconds, people will move on in their cellphones. Um, I received a message, actually, I want to also preface because there were a few, or, 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 I want to play a video for you guys. Uh, because the last time I spoke up here, um, the mayor talked to me about what I do with a media channel online. And, uh, the next few minutes, it's only four minutes, and I promise it'll be the best presentation you ever watched in these council chambers. Uh, it is a series of clips from video spots that I have worked on. I've produced, I've directed, or I've been directly involved with. A lot of the footage you're about to see was right here in this community. By the way, I'll get to it. I, I heard something over here I need to make a note of, but in this community, and so Woodland Park is a community. You can't drive through town and you might not know if you're in the county or the city. You might drive through the county and then be in the city again. So we are a community with our county people. We're not just the city limits. Trust me, I found out recently. And so, um, I'm just gonna play this quick video. Again, not everything was shot here, but you recognize plenty of places in this town. And when we're going after candidates, we should think about video a little more than just pictures, and so...
...starred from most of southern Colorado. We want to show you video we shot along...
This is a clip of mine that was posted just a few weeks ago.
...a couple of inches overnight. Woodland Park also saw a couple of inches overnight. Take a look at this video sent to us by Colorado Moto.
I own this brand.
It was a perfect morning to maybe, uh, take the dirt bike out in the Pike National Forest. How fun.
Walk through an inspired world.
This is a Teller Award-winning documentary. That was shot in Teller County.
Listening.
That was shot at the Wolf Sanctuary.
This is where you live.
Uh, that's Park County, Harts Town. You might recognize that one. This is a company that pays me to produce a fishing show in this, uh, in this county every year. This is what's beautiful about our town and about our community as a place. That's 11 Mile. That gentleman is John Roman. He's a brother of four brothers and sisters who were raised in this community.
Uh, we're up here at the top of 11 Mile Canyon. The dam is right there. That's 11 Mile Reservoir on the other side. This is the tailwaters right here, so we're gonna fish right up in here for trout, so it'll be...
This is a award-winning documentary about Colorado. That was filmed on the Magistrali property just outside of town.
From the Sangre de Cristos through Mount Evans and Long's Peak, you're supposed to see the music.
He's an award-winning producer.
I see it in my mind. I see the notes, I see the instruments, I see the colors.
Right, right there is an international superstar in the sports world. And him and his father and his grandfather live right here in Woodland Park. In the racing world, these guys are dogs. He's a part of the brand that I own.
Welcome to Uprooted Colorado. I'm Paige.
This is a reality show that I produced this year about Woodland Park, Colorado. This is being streamed on channels around the world as we speak. These smart TVs, we could find them on Amazon, Roku, Cracker, or Pluto TV. That's our town. Those are our businesses. That's the best sushi in the heart country. This is the Woodland Park Arts Alliance, Keg &amp; Quark, that was hit on by that lady right there. Runway to 67.
We're creating...
This movie was shown in theaters around the world and it is produced by a man who lives in Woodland Park, Colorado.
I understood where they...
I shot all over the state of Colorado on this one.
You should be so afraid of things that you, you can't even speak.
Airplane just takes a dive for the runway. Jet fuel spewing out, sparks going everywhere.
I look back over my shoulder because Padres right behind me and I see his front tires in the air as he's going across it.
Be captured by wonder.
That's a Teller County shot.
Creation song. A love song. Music for us all.
When people read my underground page and when they Google Woodland Park, they end up sending me messages. I have passed out a message to the council. I will hand this to the lady over at the courier once I'm finished. Uh, I also handed to who I believe is the leader of our Chamber of Commerce on the back row. That's what I was told. I've never met her. This message came to me via Facebook. How do I get a vacation package in Woodland Park? I have a standard message that reads, "Thanks for messaging us. We try to be as responsive as possible. We'll get back to you soon." And then I messaged, confused by the question, "Are you looking to visit here?" She answers, "Yes, my girlfriend's in me this spring or summer for a girl's getaway." I answer, "I got you." In the message that I gave them, I say, "I got you," and there are some portions that are blocked out. That's to protect the clients that I work with. But in that little portion, I give them two hotels, B&Bs, Airbnbs, two lodges, whatever, that I have worked with. I also mention a few restaurants that I've worked with, but... And then I say, "So one of these nicer lodging and affordable lodging around, they have a hot tub as well. They're walking distance to one of the coolest little bars and breakfast spots." When I would look into the few different hikes around Woodland Park or expeditions up Pike's Peak. She responds to me, "Is there a booklet or something that I can be sent to me, that can be sent to me uh, with stores and restaurants, et cetera?" I respond to her, "You can check the chamber. They should have information. If after talking with them, you don't find anything, let me know and maybe I can stir something up and get it sent in the mail to you." She answers, "I did," and they sent me information about Manitou Springs. That is terrible. Send me your address, I'll put something together and I'll send it your way." The next part, the council can see that I'm not gonna read that. She says, "Thank you," and she gives me her address. I've spoken with many business owners and I've heard many stories about the chamber and the visitor's center. Today, I asked a business owner who I've done business with for over two years, oh, 10 years, and she's been in business for over 12 years in this town. I tried to trick her into getting some information. So I asked her, "Are you a member of the chamber?" And she says, "Yes." I said, "Do they help you?" And her response is, "Pshhh." I need to go off the record, Michael. So we talked a little bit off the record and I won't mention those things. But then I said, she said, "But I'll go back on the record." And so I asked her, or she tells me that the only reason that she pays her chamber dues is because she's a franchisee. And it helps her district franchise manager and looks good for them. But the Chamber of Commerce has never helped her in the 12 years she has been a member. She then goes on to tell me that even in the line of work that she is in, the chamber repeatedly doesn't even allow in-town businesses to bid on that line of work. And the chamber sends that work out of our state to outside contractors. This is, this is what this business owner told me.
Mr. Dalton, I'm gonna give you another minute.
Give me another minute. I'll wrap it up, Mr. Mayor. Even though I've seen people speak up here for 30. You know, the greatest cost to our residents is not the 40 grand we give to the chamber. It's not the 30 grand we give to Main Street. It is dang sure not our city employees or our city manager. I spent 45 minutes driving around town with that man. And I'll lighten it up a little bit for a joke for the mayor. Did you know it only takes five people to run our race management place? That's the most efficient shithole in the country.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
So, don't let these guys blame these people. Because these people know how to run a town.
Sir, your time is up.
I didn't know I was under a time limit, I'm sorry.
You acknowledged one minute more and you exceeded it.
It was a good presentation until the end, but I die first.
Okay, I got everybody on my list. Anybody else that didn't sign up, like to speak on public comment? Deb Miller.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Debbie Miller, President with the Greater Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce, 1246 Ethereal Circle. There are a couple of things that I want to, uh, set the record straight on. Uh, the Greater Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce is a five, is a, um, 501(c)(6) organization. It's a membership organization. The city of Woodland Park is not the funder of the Greater Woodland Park organization. So I, I do want to set the record straight on that. We do have a contract for service, um, with the city and, um, had I known some of these things were going to be brought up tonight, I would have brought the contract. At the top of our contract, it details what services are expected for that. And that's promoting tourism regionally, and it does have a little more detail. Um, as far as, uh, Mr. Dalton's comments this evening, it's the first time that I have seen the paper that was presented to me tonight. It's very generic. Uh, Mr. Dalton was in our office yesterday. He did visit with our staff and our volunteers. He was given a packet of information that we do give out. It's protocol, it's set, um, in our procedures of what we give out, how we give out. We have absolutely nothing in our office that relates to Manitou Springs. Unless it's, um, maybe an attraction like the Cliff Dwelling, something like that. So certainly, we're willing to address any issues if someone, um, believes that they were sent the wrong information. We keep detailed records of who we send things to, so we can go back and track that as well. But I did want to set the record straight. Mayor and council, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? I wanna, uh... Um, that was a beautiful video Mr. Dalton put up. Maybe we could use that in our job ad. It's beautiful. Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll move on to reports and mayor's report first. I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna hold off and, and move to council reports. Carol?
Nothing, sir.
Val? Ken? Paul?
Would it be appropriate to ask Ben about the Paradise Ranch? Have you gone up there? Have we had any forward progress on the drainage?
Paradise Estates.
Paradise Estates.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paradise Estates.
Yes, sir, I have, um, contacted the owners. One of the, the bank representatives, he is a contractor up there that is working on some of the erosion control measures. Um, other than contacting Mr. Brown, um, I've been reading more about the reports and such, and everything I've, um, stated before is still consistent with that. Uh, seem, and things seem to be progressing well.
So, enforcing erosion control, silk fences and things to stop mud from coming down, and the owner is, uh, onus on cleaning his mess up.
Yes, yes, and they've all committed to doing that and we've already had some field meetings. We've been doing some assessments in-house, taking pictures and working together when Mr. Brown comes in town here in the next month or so. We're gonna be taking field visits and set up some meetings and make sure we're all on the same page with what, um, I see needs to be done.
Thank you so much.
Anything else, Paul?
Oh, thank you, guys, for...
No?
Um, I, I had several things I was gonna say, but I'm... Uh, I, I actually, I'm gonna change that. It, it is concerning that we, that over the four years that I've been on council, I've had, I've heard these discrepancies with the chamber and the visitor's center. And I'm hoping they're not true. Uh, but I continue to hear them. And I'm hoping Debbie can put these rumors to rest. Please do. Um, because if I continue to hear them, I'm gonna recommend that we separate the visitor's center and the chamber. I think that's probably a better way to go if we continue to hear this. So, um, I've had discussions with certain people about it and the possibilities of moving the visitor's center over to the cabin and having volunteers run it and support it that way and let the chamber do what the chamber does. Then we don't have to worry about this money being given to a 501(c) and then the population concerned that the money's being mixed. I don't know if it's being mixed. Um, that's really up to the, the chamber president and to clarify those. So Debbie, I hope, is that something that we can address? Yeah, yeah, come on up. It's okay.
Ms. Sawyer, thank you very much. Um, when Mayor Randolph was mayor at that point in time, uh, one of the things I do want to clarify is that the portion of the cultural center that we have, we lease that from the city. The chamber leases that, not the visitor's center, the chamber does. And one of the things we worked out with Mayor Randolph is there is a location within the cultural center that any business can bring in any kind of pamphlets, they can post it, it can be in there for anyone who would like to do that as well. Um, we do make our yearly report to you to show, um, the return on investment for the contract for services. This year, it was almost up to $6, um, per dollar that you do do for the contract for service. Um, but the chamber is an organization that's, that's not funded from the city. There's a misnomer in the community that we are. Chambers throughout the country... Chambers throughout the country have our Chambers of Commerce. They may be Chamber EDC and CBB or Convention and Visitors Bureau's together. It depends on what their mission is and what they do. As another point of reference, for instance, the Colorado Springs Convention and Visitors Bureau, while they receive some of the LART tax for same type of situation, it's a contract for service, they are a membership organization as well. And so, the hotels, the motels, the restaurants, all of those different organizations in Colorado Springs pay a membership fee to belong to them as well.
So, you've been 11 years now? 10 or 11 years here?
12 years.
12 years.
Mm-hmm.
I've been to many other Visitor Centers. And it was real interesting to see that they had like a museum mixed with the visitor information. In the 12 years, have you ever thought about reinventing the Visitor Center? Or has it been exactly the same for 12 years?
We've changed our operation and the way that we advertise, where we advertise, target marketing, that types of situation. But as far as delving into more of a focus into operations of a Visitor Center, it hasn't been a choice that the Board of Directors has taken. Again, that's a contract for service.
Would it be easier for you to run the Chamber with the Visitor Center separated?
I wouldn't speak to that right now. That would be a decision that my board would make.
Well, it would be the Council's decision actually to separate it.
Well, a decision from the Chamber Board, whether they wanted to pursue that contract.
I guess I'm just getting... I'm just hearing all these rumors. And I can't verify, I can't say yes or no. And I can't, you know, I don't fall and say, "Well, those gotta be true." I just, you know, there's gotta be a way to stop this leak, these rumors. So, is there a way to show that... The other thing Mr. Dalton brought up was that, do you buy your supplies outside of Woodland Park?
We're not gonna...
We do.
I'm not going to get into a discussion about how the Chamber is operated. That's a discussion for my board, not something that we have to...
Right, but how's the Visitor Center run?
As far as a Visitor Center goes, at what we look at as far as supply, all of that's local. What we do as far as advertising, that's not done locally. We try to reach out regionally and out of state even to look at doing some advertising. So, is it bought here locally? No. It's...
I'm not arguing that. I know you do a good job at that, so...
You know, Councilman Sawyer, I would like to address a little bit about the rumors.
Okay, please do.
I stood before you a couple of weeks ago when you had your council meeting and you were talking about your search for a city manager. And I talked about how important it was that these candidates were gonna research our community. And they were going to, they're going to be looking on Facebook pages. They're gonna be looking at tweets. They're gonna be looking at Instagram and all of these other things. And social media is fabulous. But it also comes to the point that there's no accountability. People can post, people can say things without accountability. The rumors to which you refer to, we try to address anything that is brought to our attention, just as the city does with any disgruntled consumer, customer, whatever. If it's brought to our attention, we can address that. Rumors, we cannot address because they're the very essence of what the description of rumor is.
Well, it's, you know, I could pass up three or four or five rumors. But when I start hearing more than that, that's why I wanted to... Have you addressed it?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. I've had my say.
Thank you, sir. John?
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the City Attorney's Report.
The City Manager's Report.
Mayor, we've got a few this evening. We'll start with Suzanne with an election update.
Just a brief update. I'd like to keep the Council informed in what the election status is. And we are in the process of verifying petitions. And by Monday afternoon, 5:00 p.m., we'll be able to announce all the verified petitions. I've verified five of them so far. And I have nine petitions, so I have four more to go. That's all I have.
Thank you, Suzanne. Jane?
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of updates from Special Projects. The Special Projects Office has moved to City Hall, as some of you may be aware. You may also have seen in the newspaper. We're really excited that we did receive notice of an award of a Safe Routes to School grant. This is subject to final approval of the Transportation Commission in February. But this is for sidewalk curb and gutter on the north side of Henrietta from Fairview to the Habitat for Humanity project, where they've put in sidewalk curb and gutter, as well as the north side of South Street from Habitat East to Baldwin. That's a $315,000 project. And our grant award is $252,000. So, that's... We're really excited about that. Also on the grant side, we're working with our partners, the Chamber, Main Street, the DDA, School District, CDOT for our Community Builders Grant, working on a master plan for downtown. Really working as a team, bringing this together for some creative solutions for some of the problems that we have, some of the challenges, as well as to reach some of the opportunities that we have downtown. That grant application is due to end of February. Working on the recognition wall for the Aquatic Center with a contractor to get that all engraved. Councilman Harvey, as you brought up, doing some research on guidelines for naming streets and placing monuments, memorial placement on public property. Lots of moving parts on that, you know, responsibility for installation, maintenance, ownership, and a lot of recent information that's very interesting on removal of monuments. As you can imagine, with all the things that are going on in the Confederate monuments, that's something to consider when you place a monument. So, lots of interesting information on that. We also continue to work on the conversion of our website. That work is being completed with a grant. We're doing a lot of work with very little money and trying our best not to burden the staff and get that transition made as quickly as we can.
One question. With the approval of the budget for 2018, we had identified a position for an IT specialist. Have we advertised for that yet?
We have. And actually, I'm gonna let Mike come to the podium and speak to that. Thanks, Jane.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, we have advertised it. And we have actually had interviews already. And we have selected a candidate. And I'm waiting to hear back on what he thinks. Hopefully, we'll have somebody onboard in two to three weeks.
So, we can get rid of the fax machine requirement?
Yeah, there you go. Thanks, Mike. Thanks for being prepared to do that. Kip, why don't you give us some updates on what's going on in your world?
Thank you. Quick water update. I have just a quick presentation for you here. Just to give you some background. Reason for this presentation is just to potentially, well, to make you aware of a potential expenditure that's not budgeted for due to recent snowpack conditions. So, with this update, I'm just gonna do a brief overview of the water system. This is about augmentation water. Okay, our augmentation water comes from two basins, the Arkansas Basin and the South Platte Basin. This overview here just kinda shows where our augmentation water comes from. Twin Lakes pumped through Colorado Springs Home State Pipeline. We have a tap in that pipeline. And we pay Colorado Springs to convey it to us. That water consists of snowpack that comes from Twin Lakes, Independence Pass area. And then also, any gains that we have on our shares in Lake Henry and Lake Meredith, which is down south in Ordway County. So, this is just the basin map. Basically, the green basin, the Arkansas basin. And the yellow, the Colorado River basin is where we get our water, our augmentation water. And then you see the star in the middle where Woodland Park is located. We are a basin diverter. All of our augmentation water goes to the South Platte. This is a recent snowtail graph as of yesterday. This is showing the equivalent of water in the snowpack that's there. Currently, we are the dark blue line. You can see right now, we are below the average. The average is the red curve, if you will. In the Arkansas basin, we're at 53% of average. Colorado basin, a little bit better, at 69% of average. Okay, and what we have in stored augmentation water currently, the purple line at the top of the graph shows just under 800 acre-feet of water. That's a good place to be, to have stored water. However, everybody's in the same position we are. And if I can't move that water to where we need it, then I need to purchase water or lease shares. So, I just want to make you aware of the potential that may exist. There's a lot of time left. Snow can still fall. And we usually see our wet snows later, you know, March timeframe, even April sometimes. But you can see, we have a lot of augmentation water in storage. I will make you aware that we are overstored. You see the dashed lines at the top, the yellow, the, I can't even tell the color of it right here, bluish, and then the green. When we're at full capacity, we're at 700 acre-feet roughly. You're probably asking yourself, "Well, we have 800." Well, we're overstored. We have more water than what we can store by our shares because there's excess space in those reservoirs to store it. However, when those reservoirs fill, all shareholders become whole and you lose what you're overstored. I anticipate, once they fill, which they will, that number will drop about 200 acre-feet. So, it will be down to 600, which is still a great place to be. However, just in case, I just want to keep you informed as there may be an expenditure that wasn't budgeted for.
And how are you postured to fund that expenditure, should we need to do that?
So, projection for end-of-year unaudited number, the net position or fund balance in the water fund is 3.19. So, there is funds available to purchase water or lease shares in case we need to.
Okay. Questions for Kip on that? Yes, sir.
Could you give us an update on the questions with the Scouts?
I can. I can. We met with the Scouts a couple of times since I've last given an update. The most recent was the first week in January. We met their Executive Director and their entire board onsite to discuss some concerns they have with the proposal. We looked at an alternate access point and road to a potential reservoir. And we also looked at a borrow site to make it more affordable to construct the reservoir there if there is material available to use for that structure. So, currently, we have got a scope of work from our engineer to proceed with preliminary access point and road design and also to engage a geotechnical firm to do the borings and then analyze those borings to see what material is there. Okay? Any other water questions before I switch to wastewater? Okay, just to give you a quick update on the plant expansion. I just have four pictures here. And I'll kinda talk through my notes and point out the pictures. Currently, all six basins have been completed. Concrete basins outside the facility have been completed. And all of them have been in use or are in use. And the reason I say that is because the sequencing of trying to keep a wastewater plant in operation and under construction at the same time is challenging. So, the bottom right-hand corner is the new Oxyc Basin. Here, you see the aeration grid installed. And now, that is actually in service. The bottom picture to the left is the new clarifier that's being installed currently. These pictures are taken about a week ago of the clarifier that's currently being installed. You can see the center column or the portion, the center of the clarifier. The upper right-hand corner, it's a little hard to make out, but what you see is a grid of rebar steel that has been placed. These are the partition walls in the existing basin. We call it Aeration Basin 1 or the East Basin. That was taken out of service. And they're putting these partition walls in. And then also, a new aeration grid goes in there. They will be pouring those three partition walls towards the end of next week. And then, the upper left-hand picture is, you see the stainless steel control panels? That is the new UV disinfection that's going in. You can see just to the right of those panels, about a one-foot-wide plywood board. That is the new channel that was installed where the bulbs will be inserted and used for disinfection. And this will, we believe this will be online about the first week in February. So, we can then remove the chlorine and sulfur gas that we use for disinfection now. Outside of that, we're about 75% through the financials. So, we're about $5.7 million through, the $8.3 million loan. A little, I would say about 70, 65, 70% through construction. And the reason for that is why the financials are more is because all the equipment is onsite. So, the three blowers, the screw press for de-watering, the VFDs, the clarifier, the recycle pumps, the RAS pumps, the waste pumps, almost all the equipment is onsite. And we've paid for that. So, we're just, basically, it's prepping to install. And then, they're working on the third clarifier, which I mentioned. And mid-February is a big time at the plant because they're switching the computer, the PLCs, and then also implementing the SCADA system. So, outside of that, the loading is around 114% over design, current design. It's been challenging to sequence new things coming on and offline. But the plant has been in compliance the complete time.
When finished, Kip, what will the percentage of capacity be?
The organic capacity will be right around 4,000 pounds per day. And right now, we're just slightly under 2,000 pounds per day. And then, the hydraulic capacity increases about 0.1 MGD. It's not a whole lot because what we've seen is hydraulic capacity has flatlined. Low-flow fixtures, not a lot of water usage. It stayed the same. But with less water means heavier concentration or more organic loading.
So, this $8 million expenditure is gonna get us, in your opinion, how far in the future?
So, the projection population for the finish will be 14,100.
14,100.
And our water population build-out is 12.6.
Any other questions? Great job. Thanks.
Thanks, Kip. Sally?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure to introduce to you formally this evening, Eric Dixman. And Eric has been working with the Planning Department as an intern for the last month and a half and will be with us through the end of February. And one of his tasks has been to help our code enforcement official and our police department to fill some gaps in our code as it relates to nuisances, that we are needing to fill those gaps. So, Eric is going to describe to you the code that he's been working on.
And Council, this is in the vein of, we want to preheat you to things that will be coming in the future. We're not asking for any decisions tonight, just to let you know some of the things that the staff's working on.
So, very informal and very brief. February 15th, we intend on holding the first reading of an ordinance designed to specifically address public nuisance within the municipal code. And so, the Code Enforcement Office and the Police Department have identified various issues via consistent reporting that aren't addressed within our current code. So, we are recommending amendments which will address these. So we are recommending amendments which will address these issues by adding a chapter for public nuisance and various sections on animal waste disposal, feeding wildlife, removal of snow and ice from sidewalks, light, unsanitary or dangerous premises, and noxious weeds, as well as adjusting various definitions throughout the code. So pending any questions you may have. All right.
Thanks, Eric. Council, I've got a couple of things very quickly this evening. First of all, council, I want to thank Murph for being concerned about my mental health and my ability to smile or not to smile. I've had plenty of things to smile about over the years, but one of the things that causes me not to smile is when there are unsubstantiated accusations and insinuation or accurate numbers aren't given that are for public consumption. So I want to correct a couple of things that were said. He mentioned that we're spending $96,000 a month on the pool debt. It's not true. It's $58,700 on average. It's still a lot of money, but it's not $96,000 a month. I also challenge his math on the revenue from the motorcycle rally. I came up with something significantly less. Maybe he's including the sales tax that would go to the school as well. What Mr. Murphy may not understand is the years that we have supported the motorcycle rally. We've provided police support this year. We followed what other municipalities are doing based on some guidance from council to try to recover cost for services. And we went to the promotions manager and said, we hate to do this to you. We love it, but we need to manage our pennies. And so we asked that he cover the cost of our police department. We put him in touch with the barricade company. The barricade company provided for gratis the barricades, and we provided minimal police effort because that's what they were able to work out, working with Miles and our planning department, to make it a safe event. To imply that the city and me particularly are not veteran-sensitive, I think is just nonsense. We've also, again, to be in compliance with what other communities are doing, we made that suggestion to the manager very early on so that he would have the opportunity to raise that money. He raises money for a wonderful cause, but he also pays for services from other entities. And we felt it was time for us, after how many years? More than 10, to start getting some of those funds back for our community. So we hope that it stays in the community. We hope we can continue to work with Pro Promotions and Mr. Weir to have that event here. The visitor center, there are two models for visitor centers in Colorado. One is that they are contracted with municipalities, or two that they're for chambers to run them, or they're standalone facilities. If the city were to run the visitor center, it would cost us significantly more. If another entity were to do it, I can promise you, they would be coming to the city to look for money or space to operate that visitor center, because it does take somebody to organize it. Volunteers are wonderful. Our city relies on them tremendously, but it's a good operation. It has a good return on the membership. If you have a 450 membership organization, not everybody's going to be happy, but that membership level has stayed consistent for some time. It's grown over the last few years. It goes down a little bit depending on the economy. It's a good investment of taxpayer dollars for the visitor center. The last thing I'd like to mention is that over what I'll call the holiday period, from say the middle of December to early January, we had eight water breaks in the December and the early part of January, six within the holiday period. All of those were galvanized lines. Galvanized lines are aging, and we get a lot of water breaks this time of year. So it has nothing to do with our ability to maintain those water lines. It's just the fact that they're old and they're galvanized and they wear out and they spring leaks. The point here is that of those water breaks, they were all repaired, with the exception of one, in less than two hours. The majority of them had the water off to these customers for less than 10 minutes. One occurred on a Saturday. It was at a church. The church didn't have anything on that Saturday or that Sunday, so the crews worked with them and said, we'll come back on Monday and get it fixed so we wouldn't incur overtime costs. The reason we were able to get these things done in 10 minutes or two hours for these customers is because we have the right equipment, we have the right number of vehicles, we have the properly trained people that are paid an appropriate salary so that we can take care of the citizens, and I'm thankful that the council allowed me to manage the vehicles and our people and their salaries. Mayor, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I don't believe we have any other reports this evening. I've got one letter of written correspondence. And, "Dear Council, I am writing you to discuss the Aquatic Center. In December, the city sold 1,749 daily passes, one three-month pass, one six-month pass, 16 annual passes, and approximately 300 of what they call plunge card passes. Of the passes sold, 2,047 were pay-per-use type passes, and 18 were in the form of a membership structure. This data lays out clearly what many in the community said from the beginning. The March 6th, I'm sorry, the 3612-month passes are far too expensive, and the community is not buying them. The Aquatic Center should be striving to achieve two goals right now. One is hitting their financial numbers, and two is being a civic resource that is widely used by the community. The data as laid out by the city suggests in December that roughly 2,000 to 3,000 people visited the pool. As such, daily pool use is probably hovering at 100 users plus or minus over a 13-hour day. The daily capacity of the pool is far, far greater than this. While I've taken certain interest in hearing you go through your budget process and work out the numbers with great care, the city management is hoodwaking council on what is and will remain its single greatest expenditure and investment on behalf of its citizens. I will repeat again, the utilization rate of the pool is a fraction of what it should be. The city's numbers bear this out. Yet, it remains the biggest capital expense the city will ever have, and it's being underutilized, it's been the biggest underutilized asset because of its annual pricing mess-up. While the council is wide to hold city finances to account, and have done so, they appear to have thus far allowed the city staff to get a virtual pass on the actual results regarding the pool. The city is in a classical sense, being penny wise and pound foolish. The city manager has stated repeatedly to you and others that it could take years to determine demand for the pool and adjust pricing. Would a business in this town survive if they took Mr. Butterby's slow roll approach to responding to its customers? The original Ballard King study stated the city would likely have to subsidize the pool to the order of $90,000 per year. But by David's own suggestion this week, the number is likely going to be much greater, perhaps double. Encourage revenue and greater use by lowering pass rates now. Citizens have shown you they are not interested in them at their current pricing. Do not be penny wise as you were with the budget and pound foolish, missing the giant opportunity before you to drive additional memberships, raise revenue, and encourage the health and well-being of residents. Costs associated with the pool are almost 100% fixed. The variable costs associated with additional use are miniscule compared to the bond payments and general staff overhead the city has already incurred. Please, look at these numbers closely and direct staff to take action that will make a difference for both the budget and city residents now. Now, not in two or three years. This is the single biggest thing council could do with regards to the city budget and general city welfare. Thank you for your time and consideration. Todd Weissman. I think maybe the next meeting, we can expect a report on the pool, maybe?
I've got this letter in time. I've got some information I can share this evening, Mayor.
Let's do it.
Thank you. I appreciate Todd's desire to make the Aquatic Center as profitable as it can be and as utilized as heavily by our citizens. That's why we built it. He took a look at the December numbers. Please remember that we had the grand opening on October 29th. We started charging our customers on October 30th. So we've had November, December, and a couple of weeks in January to put together some data associated with this. If we do a straight-line analysis of time versus money, we're ahead of the game a little bit. We're 17, well, 18% of the timeframe, excuse me, of the timeframe, if you will, since it's open till the end of the year for what was projected, and we're exceeding that just by a little bit. We're at 22.34% of the revenue stream that we expected. So we are ahead of that, again, if you do a straight-line approach. One of the things that we're seeing is that many, many people are choosing to buy the punch cards rather than invest in the monthly, I'm sorry, the three-month, six-month, or annual passes. They're still getting their feet wet to see what it is they want to do. We just started programming early January. Daily use shot up 50% when we started the programs, the pass use, not the daily rates, but the passes. So in November and December, we had about 117 pass users come in each day. That's not a daily fee. That's someone who's bought a punch card or a three-month, six-month, or one-year pass, 117. When we started the programs in January, that number jumped to 166. We are seeing people come in. We're seeing people make decisions based on the programs that we're offering. We look at this on a weekly basis. I get a report from Cindy that shows me every level of pass that's being purchased. Yes, we're behind on what we projected for the three-month passes. We expect in May, when people start coming here for the summertime, that that's going to go up. We just think that's the way this thing is going to work. But we've been at it for two and a half months. Give us a chance before you cause us to make any drastic changes. I think we're doing okay.
Thank you very much.
And to address, I'm sorry, the Ballard King study did say that the city would subsidize it at about $98,000. When we did our assessment of the city running it, when we looked to contract it out, that was going to be closer to $450,000 a year that we would have been subsidizing. Our first go-around, we got that down to about 210. Right now, we're thinking, based on the budget, that we will have a subsidy of about $138,000 a year, which is significantly less than contracting it out, less than what we thought, but it is more than what the Ballard King study said. I acknowledge that. We included that in the budget. Council is aware of it.
Okay. Thanks again, council. Before we adjourn here, I'd like to move to go into executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-402, Sub 4, Sub F, Sub 1, for discussion of a personnel matter, specifically the hiring of a new city manager. Do you have a second? Thank you.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Swenier?
Yeah.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Council, let's try to get started by about 10 till, 10 till 10. This meeting is adjourned. I'm sorry. This meeting is not adjourned. We're moving to executive session.